The windows stay.
Yeah, yeah.
I've got my phone here if we get a warning.
All right, okay, so I'm gonna call the Board of Trustees for the Village of Cambridge, our board meeting of August 10th to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Rose.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Whitworth.
Here.
Brineck.
Here.
Geller. Kumbir.
Here.
McNell.
Here. Okay, can we stand and give the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Lisa, has the meeting been properly posted?
It has been posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, Cambridge Post Office, hometown bank, and the village website.
Okay, all right. Public appearances. Anybody wish to say anything? Actually, I would like to call on Mike to speak, just briefly. You received an award just recently. Can you come up and tell us about it?
Yeah, we, the distillery received an award notification from Constructive Wisconsin through one of our primary contractors, which was Peeper Power. They had submitted the Rick House build to the commission for review for, I believe it's called a specialty construction site, and we were one of the award selectees for that, that honor. I believe there's award ceremony in September, but we haven't gotten all the details just yet. But it is kind of a nice recognition for our vendors and then also for the dancing goat and the Rick House. And I brought that notice to the committee last night because it started in planning and zoning so many years ago, it seemed like, when we were talking about, is this feasible as possible? And I thought that was kind of a nice way to tie that out and say, here's where we are today.
Okay. All right. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. I'm gonna move on here, kind of tighten up the meeting. Approval of the consent agenda? Anybody want? Okay, second?
A second.
All right, get a motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Carries. All right, president's report. I want to give you two, two items. One, I was at the Rib Fest, wonderful event. I wasn't there all day. I got there around 1:00, 12:30. And at that point, they would probably already had about 250 people. We had great weather. People were out and they must have had about five or so different, you know, barbecue guys. And they had chicken and wings and whatever. And it was really well attended. Just a lot of fun. People were glad to be back, so, you know, that's when they close the street down. The other item I want to mention, I did get ahold of the schools. I told you I would last meeting and invited in the school superintendent. So she will be coming in at the second meeting in September, so she'll be here. Now, if you have questions, please get those to Lisa, and then Lisa, if you can just gather those, I'll get those over to the new superintendent, so.
When was that? What day?
The second meeting, I want to say the 27th, but I could be off. I'm just guessing now.
It's the 28th.
28th, okay.
You're quicker than me.
Right, the 4th Tuesday?
Yeah, 4th, 4th Tuesday.
September 28th.
I promised her that I would, we would try to have her in right, like, now, you know?
Yeah.
So she doesn't have to sit through a whole meeting. And so that is, that is scheduled, and away we go. So that's my report for this, this time period. Okay, moving on, plan commission.
Both items for plan commission are on the agenda under new business, so I'll just leave it for that for later.
Okay, joint law enforcement.
We just met tonight, and I took two things out of this meeting tonight. The commissioners from Deerfield are also, they oversee a few things. And EMS is something that they're, they just came up with them. And the response times are going out farther and farther. So what they're looking at is putting more people on staff so that the response times can get cut down. But they're still with Deer Grove. But they're, there's a, they've commissioned a study right now for that. And the second thing is Dane County Sheriff's Department brought up is growth in this area. You know, there's a couple places that growth's gonna be large, and that's, one place is Sun Prairie. They're gonna make a whole bunch of land, and they're getting sewer in there. But then itself, it's still gonna come east. Deerfield's probably first, and right behind Deerfield's gonna be Cambridge. It's just gonna explode with growth. Sort of like Cottage Grove did maybe 15 years ago or 20 years ago. I just couldn't believe how fast Cottage Grove grew. They continue to grow today, so that's something we have to take a look at, and we have to be prepared for it because it's gonna happen.
Okay, questions for Ted?
The Dane County Sheriff, new Dane County Sheriff did come and introduce himself too, and had a nice discussion with him, offered his assistance as we're moving forward. We'll be getting their budgets, looking at budgets at our next meeting in October.
All right, okay.
Budget time.
Budgets are coming up. Okay, thank you, Ted. Village office updates, Lisa.
I'm sorry, didn't prepare much today. It's my first day back from vacation, so I've been gone six days. Much needed vacation. A lot of things still going on. The bike path dedication was this weekend. I heard that was a big success. A lot of people attended that. Working on a couple ongoing projects, so the bike path will be, they've started doing some tree clearing and so forth. The true moving of land and so forth will be coming up pretty quick now. Get started on that. Working on a number of other big projects that are ongoing, working with our attorneys on a number of different projects. Couple other things on the agenda. I don't know if you have anything to add, Chrissy, from when I was gone.
Thank you for that, Chrissy. Appreciate that. Okay, all righty. Any questions for Lisa? All right, moving on, bills.
First round was $37,592.08, and the second round was $8,743.82 for a grand total of $46,335.90.
Okay. Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to pay those and set them out.
Second.
Okay, questions?
I have a question for a conditional use permit for a map that we paid $46,07.
Is that a pass-through cost that we have to, since we have to publicize it in the newspaper?
They're paying for that.
All right, and we're just passing the cost through?
Yeah, the cost, they are charged the fee, we then pay the publication and so forth.
All right. And the Computer Magic, we have a contract with them, right?
Mm-hmm.
Would I be able to see a copy of it at some point? That's.
Yeah.
A thousand dollars this month.
Yeah.
That's a lot, so I just want to see what's.
Yeah.
A thousand, a thousand a year? That's the monthly charge.
All right. I have two, and you might be able to answer these right off the top. One was for badger land disposal, the fish ponds. And it wasn't much of a charge, $199. We share that with the Lions Club, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we're on top of that.
They get billed half of it.
Okay, perfect. And then the other one, similar to that, the Cam Rock Bike Trail Design, it's $5,641. We get reimbursed for that? We're just a pass-through?
We will get reimbursed. We have to do the expenses. We will, once we've done enough expenses, we'll start submitting to the state and county for reimbursement.
All right. Have we, is this the first big one that we've submitted then, or?
We have not submitted anything yet.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, we did have, I don't know the exact amount, in donations. We had been using the donations to pay for things that had come in. Probably $25,000, $30,000. The donations are gone. We will start incurring the cost and will then be submitting to the county and the state for the two grants that we have.
So do we do that then, once we hit an amount, or once a certain time?
I'll be working with Brian from Town and Country. We may do one for everything prep, leading up to when we start digging, and then work through the contractors. So I'll be working with Town and Country on the submittal for those.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Okay, roll call.
Franklin.
Yes.
Whitworth.
Yes.
Brineck.
Yes.
Geller. Kumbir.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
McNell.
Yes. All right, passed unanimously. Moving on, new business. First thing up here, possible intergovernmental agreement with the town of Christiana. I've got something to say, but Eric, you want to start with that, or you?
So I brought this up at the plan commission meeting. So we have an intergovernmental agreement with the town of Oakland, but we don't have one with our other neighbor, which is to the west and to the north of us. And that is the general direction that we'd like to grow, so maybe now isn't the best time, maybe it is, we don't really know until we actually ask them. But to try and head off some of the problems that we might encounter expanding that way or to the north, I thought it might be worth having Mark at least reach out and ask their, their president, Brineck's president, if he'd be interested in starting or drafting some sort of document to outline what can be expected. We don't have the same kind of intermingled relationship that we have the town of Oakland, since they are right here. But if we're gonna continue trying to expand that way and that general, that does fit with our growth plan, it's not required for growth, it's just something to consider. One thing specifically, recently there was that salvage yard that was discussed right on our entrance there, across the street from the existing salvage yard. And an intergovernmental agreement could address issues of land use like that.
But in the past, I can, I can give you one example, Scott Farms used to be part of Christiana. When, when the Scots decided to develop that area, they annexed that into Cambridge. And really, Christiana didn't have much to say about it. They, it's just a rubber stamp is what it is. And so there was some type of agreement, you know, and also the Johnson properties have, have done things in the past also. So.
This wouldn't stop that.
Huh?
This couldn't stop that. An intergovernmental camp, an intergovernmental agreement isn't intended to prevent changing of boundary lines. It's more to set out the rules of impeachment, so to speak, of if this happens, then we will go forth in this specific manner. Now, there was room for growth with the town of Oakland, there were some issues in the wording and language of certain aspects, but if we don't even know if they're interested yet, so we're not gonna dig that far into the weeds. Mark?
Okay, here's what I will tell you. The, I, I got a phone call today from Mark Cook, and he had read our agenda and wanted to know what this was about, and I had to assure him that this was not anything that was due to the solar panel.
Yep.
And I kind of told that to the board, or to the commission last night, planning commission, that trying to bring this to the town of Christiana right now just seems like really timely. So he appreciated that. He was willing to come to us tonight, and I said, I don't think it's necessary. I would, we have it, I could sit down, we've got an agreement. I don't think it has to be as robust as the agreement that we have with the town of Oakland, but we can pick and choose the best parts. He can work with his board, I can work with you as far as trying to craft a mutually acceptable agreement. And he's all up for that. He's, he's willing to do that, once he knew that it was not some sort of backdoor maneuver on our part. So he's all up for it. So if, if you are in agreement, I could use a motion in a second to pursue discussions with Mark Cook, with the town of Christiana, and then subject to your review.
Yep.
As well as his.
I'd, I'd make that motion to, you know, give Mark the authority to discuss a possible intergovernmental agreement with town of Christiana under the statute 660301.
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, I will continue on with Mark, and I will let you know how that's going. Okay, moving on, possible address change requests from the property owners at 313 North Pleasant Street.
Yep, you guys should have a map in your, in your packet. It's a little dark, and I apologize. These four properties are, are split basically right down the middle. Two of the properties right now are addressed 311 North Pleasant and 313 North Pleasant with different units, one through four in each. Well, the other two are owned by two other, another person. So those addresses, well, are 313 North Pleasant, 313 North Pleasant, but units five through eight, units nine through 12. So the owner approached us and wants these addresses, those two addresses changed. So I looked at it, and you can see on the very bottom right, that house is numbered 311 England Street. I would suggest to go with 315 due to the fact that they need to put a meter or something in it, in there. We have an available address. So that would be 315, units nine through 12, England Street. And then the next property above would be 317, units five through eight, England Street. I took this to the postmaster, she, she, she respected that. I brought it to her for, her review. I've also had the building inspector review it, and then I've also had both deputies review it as well.
And then we just have to change how we read the meters in those buildings then, right?
Um, I don't think we would have to change it, the billing.
The address would just have to be.
Oh, just see how the address changed, right, okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
But these people are gonna have to use, you know, they're gonna, I'm sure the owner will redo the mailboxes, but if, if any expenses.
Because I don't know how they deliver mail over there right now.
That's what the postmaster said, that this would, this, changing this would help it a lot. Less confusing.
And for EMS purp, or for emergency purposes.
Absolutely, and police.
All four buildings being the same address is confusing.
I'll make a motion to approve the address change from 313 North Pleasant Street to 315 and 317 England Street for each respective property.
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion, questions? All those in favor of the request from the property owners at 313 North Pleasant Street, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It carries. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, upcoming vacancy on the village board. Lisa, what do you know about this?
Carla Geller has put her property up for sale, so they will be leaving Cambridge. So once that property is sold and they move, we will have a vacancy. In the past, we have put out notices that there's a vacancy. Anybody interested, please share their interest with the office and bring it before the board. So just want to let everyone know that's going to be happening. So if there's people out there who are interested in serving on the board, that vacancy will be coming up. She does not have a date yet of when they'll be, be leaving, but the house is on the market.
When is Carla's term up?
In April, I mean, it's April next year, it's the same as me, I think.
Okay, I was, I'm trying to think who was on the board.
Because we were both voted in the other 20, in 2020, so yeah.
All right, thank you.
For the person who wanted to fill that seat, would they have to get the nominations and go through that process?
No, not if we did at the board level.
Okay, the board, we would vote them, that person is?
Yeah, you know, unless Carla doesn't move till next February, then we could say, we'll just wait until the election and fill it. But if we fill it earlier, the board doesn't, you don't need the nomination. But then they would need to run when her term is up.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Other question?
And I'll put a plug on, we still need public members for plan commission, water and sewer, zoning board of appeal. So anyone out there who's listening, we have vacancies if you want to get involved.
Okay, all right.
A plug in.
Subtle. Okay, let's move on. Village attorney, Mary Bailing. We see the letter, Lisa.
And I don't want people to misread this, Mary's gotten, congratulations on her retirement. She is not retiring yet. She is still planning on practicing for a number of years. I know we talked about it a little bit, knowing that it would be coming. So it was funny, we talked about it at the last meeting, and this letter, I got a call right after saying this was coming. She is looking to retire down the line. She'll be practicing for a number of years. She would like to step back from the municipal. She's offered to continue helping us on the vineyard development, the, as that's been an ongoing. She knows where they're at on a lot of the deed transfers and so forth. She can continue working with the courts. As she states, a number of bigger projects, she has asked us to go to other attorneys. She doesn't want to take on large projects. Her and I, down the line, will go through files that she has, that are village files and so forth. So it'll be a process, but it's something we need to start looking at what we want to do moving forward. If we do have big projects coming up sooner rather than later, you know, start looking what we want to do for those. If we want another individual attorney, we've worked with a number of firms. Do we want to go with the larger firm that, you know, has an attorney specializing in municipal law, but have others on hand that can back up for environmental, for developers agreements, for different things? So stuff we have to start considering. And know that Mary is here to help us still, but will be backing away from the municipal practices. And it's not just us, it's the other municipalities, the fire commission, and so forth that she's worked with.
And the only other attorney that we have here in town is Mike Rumpf.
Yeah.
And Mike's not interested. He had an associate, and his associate, I think, lives out in town of Christiana. His name was Mark Sewell. I don't know if you knew him. And I got to know him years ago. Mark Sewell then went, he was, I want to say general counsel for the city of Pittsburgh, and he retired, now he's living back here. And I see him, I'll probably see him Friday at the concert. I could ask him if he is interested. I mean, I don't know about liability insurance, I don't know if he wants to do anything at all, but he's a guy that's got experience, because that's what he focused in on, was municipal law, to, to, you know, to help us. Because I, I don't know who else we're gonna get, unless we go to Madison and get one of the bigger firms.
Well, that's a discussion for the board. Do we want to with the firm? Deerfield uses a firm on Madison. You know, we've reached out to different firms on.
On different things.
We have the roster site, on the vineyards development, on the solar panels. So do we want to go with the firm that has municipal law, but also those other areas to help us if needed? If we go with an individual, particularly one who may be retired, are we relying on outsiders more often than not then? So it's a discussion we have to have, we have to start looking at an option. We don't have to make a decision immediately, but, you know, we have to start thinking about it.
Absolutely.
Does anybody else have any contacts or any thoughts on the matter?
Sounds like the firm is the way to go. Is, what are the pros and cons? Is it more expensive to hire a firm? Has the village hired a firm before?
No. Mary, like she said, she's been with the village. But like she said too, she's been with the village 35 years.
Oh, it's been, okay.
She acknowledges that we've grown, needs have changed, and we've outgrown the services she can provide.
And, and some of the projects that she did take on, it maybe would have been more efficient to use somebody else that had the expertise in that area versus Mary.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna name projects or anything right now, but I know there was a lot of frustration on the board because things move so slow with Mary.
You do get the specialization with a larger firm, because you've got people that are dedicated, but you've got people that are dedicated with a higher hourly rate.
Right.
So is there any savings and, you know? I think it's just something for all of us to keep in mind. And can we just, you know, revisit this again, Lisa? I want to say the beginning of October, just, you know?
Yeah.
So we keep it in mind that, you know, we've gotta do something.
And if we move forward with anything, you know, we have a developer before us. You know, we need to know who we want working with us on that development. Mary's not gonna take on the new development.
Right.
You know, so we need to start thinking, and it may come sooner rather than later. It may be a while down the line, but.
Okay.
We've worked with a couple different firms, you know, how we want to proceed.
Does she have any recommendations of people that she would suggest to us? And you don't have to answer if you don't know, it's just.
Yeah, you know, she'd be willing to sit and talk with us, look at our needs and what we're looking for.
Okay. Just talk about it.
The things that she's working on, still continuing to work on, but we have to start thinking.
All right.
We have to avoid, as a board, putting our legal onus on our administrator. You know, we can't do that because we need to get the right professionals in to do that kind of work. I mean, to that point, rather than, I get the point of waiting to make a final decision, but should start to do beyond just that which you mentioned, Mark, to some of these other firms that we used recently if we felt like we enjoyed or liked their services for some of the projects in the last three years, along with getting advice from Mary.
Yeah.
Who would she suggest? Because, like you said, we've had some, we might as well reach out to them now and at least understand what is that cost gonna look like for a firm.
Yeah.
I know there's a municipal representation out of Lake Mills. There's, there's some folks there that can be contacted as well, as well as your, your representative.
All right.
Yeah, so people know, you know, get me names too. I can reach out to firms we've used, what are your base rates, you know, and so forth. You know, some municipalities that have the firms, those firms are at every board meeting. Do we need that?
Does the legal Wisconsin municipalities have any listing of lawyers?
They may.
They have a lot of resources that we could maybe tap into.
Yeah.
They have a lot, but it'd be nice if we found somebody that had the experience that was around here because you're traveling.
Yeah, but if they have a list of ones that are in the area, yeah.
Let's just circle back on this one, in the first meeting in October. In the meantime, I'll talk with this individual, and if you've got any other names, anybody in the law firms you've worked with that you thought did a, a good job, and maybe have a municipal services division, that would be the time.
Maybe another thing we can do is see what we budget for our legal representation yearly and kind of bounce it off that when we do our audit and financing.
All righty, let's move on, unfinished business. Fire commission update. I'll start with building subcommittee update.
We have a meeting coming up this Thursday, so that's the latest on that.
I reported on the last meeting, at the last board meeting, so.
Okay.
We can comment the next board meeting.
Okay. As far as the fire commission, we did have a meeting on July 29th that was fairly straightforward. There really wasn't anything of consequence. There were some things that I wanted to talk about, and I had submitted this to Mark Cook, who is the secretary, but I had, and I copied the chair, but I didn't go through the chair, so I will be bringing it back on September 16th. And that information, or the things I wanted to talk about, one was the unionization of the EMS, and just where we're at with that. I want to talk about the complaints that were filed with the Dane County District Attorney regarding open meetings, notice, and change of at-large. Certainly want to get into the budgets and the legal fees that we've incurred. So, other than that, I, it was just standard, you know, running, looking at run reports and reports from the fire chief and the director, EMS.
It does say that Mark Cook gave an update on the Pizza Pit property, but no action was taken?
There's no action. There's just nothing.
They don't know what they're going to do with it yet?
They've got it, and, you know, it's just a financing means right now, so no action was taken. Okay, Energy Subcommittee, Wyatt.
Yeah, two quick things, we haven't met since the last village board meeting, but we have a meeting next Tuesday. The first is, we do have a draft out of the grant. Jeff Millsap put that together, and it's being reviewed by our legal counsel now, pretty comprehensive. They're also putting together a budget, so to Chris and Carla's point in our last meeting, they're putting together like a comprehensive budget that could project out what the cost may be for continuing sort of the work with the PSC. So, as part of the grant, you have to have something more than just, this is what we've already incurred, so that'll be good. And then the second thing is, there was a pre-hearing meeting on Thursday of last week. Not much there, there was a couple of other attorneys, there was one in particular, I don't know who, I think it's a she represents, but they brought up a couple of questions about changing some dates. Ultimately, the PSC decided not to change anything except for, there's a date in February that they updated, I think they pushed back.
I can straighten that out just a little bit. The other attorneys, it was the school board was there, our attorney, of course, was there, Christiana's attorney was there, and they, you know, the other attorneys but ours, wanted to try to push the timeline out a little bit. But our attorney, you know, he went into the meeting, he introduced himself and didn't say a word after that.
That's not true, Ted. I read through it. The only, the only attorneys that wanted to change things were the Chris Klopp, I don't know who Chris Klopp represents, Roxy Ingalls stands attorney.
Okay.
And then Christianas didn't want to change anything, they in fact sort of argued against it and left it alone. And then our attorney agreed with the other ones who potentially suggested possible changes, but ultimately the PSC decided against it.
Okay, alright.
So, the second thing though, that they brought up, the attorneys brought up the statutes related to land use, and a lot of notes were taken on that. I know that Christiana brought it, brought it up on the land use plan, Roxy's attorney brought it up in the land use plan, and what I. Didn't?
Go ahead, keep going, I'm listening.
But I just wanted to let people know that we were, they were talking about land use and, and what it's going to do to Christiana, or do to Cambridge if we don't do anything.
Okay.
What was the purpose of the pre-hearing?
Mostly the schedule. So, it's just saying, here's the schedule, introduce the interveners, make sure we know who's on the intervener list. So, it's, yeah, it was intros, if there's any concerns with the schedule, which, as Ted said and I said, there was, there was one attorney who brought up some potential changes. Roxy's also brought up a change. Ultimately, the PSC only made one change, which was a date in February. Other than that, nothing changed.
Okay. When is the actual PSC hearing?
So, in Venergy's is October, beginning of, or is it end of October you guys present? I think there's a date that you guys have to present something, or Kashgang for. I don't know why I'm looking at you, Aiden, but there was a, there was a date in October, and then interveners' response, I think, is November. There's a couple of dates in between, I can, I don't have the schedule, the full schedule in front of me, but I can pull it up.
Okay. Okay, other questions? And we have a meeting, what, you said Tuesday?
Tuesday, yep.
Alright, what, 6:30?
No.
No.
5:30?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock. It was before Water and Sewer.
Alright, okay. Yeah, I'm just, okay.
We had water that night, too.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Wyatt. Alrighty, correspondence?
Nope.
Looks like we're okay there. Alright, we've got some upcoming meetings. I'll go through these real quick. August 17th is Energy Subcommittee, 17th is also Water and Sewer. August 24th Audit and Finance.
Shoot, and I have upstairs, I can run up before you leave tonight, copies of the audit, so you can take them, look at them before that meeting, so.
Alright.
I will run up, I was going to put them on the carton.
Well, I know, I've seen Eric over here, he is sharpening up his pencils, and, boy, he's got some 12 column paper, and you're just ready to go. August 24th Village Board, August 30th is economic development and public works to be determined. So, that's what we've got. Let's see here. Questions, referrals to staff or future agenda items. One, Laura Payne will be coming by, and there will be, on August 24th, and there'll be also a Jefferson County update. Correct, Lisa? Alright. I would also, and this, this is kind of, I'd like to have at least your, your understanding. We had a meeting regarding the, what's going on out there on the economic side with the Hinchley property and the developer, Todd Schultz. I had conversations last week, and it was, this is economic, so I didn't, you know, Lisa was gone, and, let's see, Matt, is Matt Flynn is gone this week? And so, I did have the conversations, but Wyatt, it wasn't about the solar farm, it was about the economic. And what I want to do here is just sort of, you know, we, we had a lot of information. I would like to, to talk about this at the next meeting and have some proposed development, some preparation, a letter authorizing our interest in, in moving ahead with this, with the two developers and what they're trying to do. And so, we, we need to let them know that, you know, this is positively reviewed or by the board, if you're in agreement, and we go from there. Now, this is new, so please don't, I, I don't want to get into something where I didn't, I got off record. I'm asking this to be put on the agenda.
That's fine.
Okay, so if it's about that, Ted, otherwise it's.
It's about that, Mark, and every time that they've come to talk to us before.
Who's they now?
The developer.
Okay.
They'd say they'd like to put maybe a gas station here and something else there, but they can't tell us exactly what's going to go in there as a development. And if they can't tell us what they want to put in there as a development, they don't have any plan for that area. You've got to come up with a plan.
Well, they.
Just like lot number two is going to, is going to be the gas station.
Alright, but we're not, at this time, it's just, we would like to see development. That's what we're telling them. Then it's up to them to be able to come back.
We'd like more information.
I would like more information on.
Right.
Because, because you know it's planned for there now, right?
Huh?
You know it's planned for there now. What's planned for that, what they want to develop right now is solar panels, is what's planned for it now.
Yeah, I know that.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we also, you know, it would be, we need the discussion, do we want to move forward? Do we want to tell them, yes, we're interested to see what you are bringing to the table, what you'd like to do and move forward? There's processes and procedures that would go with every step.
Right.
Along the way.
Yep.
But you also have to think of, you build a business park, you don't know who's all going to be in a business park. You're building it to bring business in, you build it and they will come. There, and this isn't for this discussion, but we have to keep that in mind. They're not going to have definitives that everybody wants to know until you move forward.
Right.
But we're not anywhere near that step yet.
I don't think so.
Anyway, I'd like to talk about it at the next meeting. Did you have a question, Chris?
No, I just have something to add.
Oh.
Not, not to your subject, but something to add to the referral for future agenda.
Oh, okay, let me finish this up then. We've got the next meeting, they need to hear from us. Are, are we looking, are we positively inclined to, to review a proposed development? And I think they need to have something from us. So, I talked with Lisa about that today, and we can get on that and get a letter for them in a couple of weeks. Now, I'll ping pong the ball over to you, and then I'll take it again, but go ahead, Chris.
I just wanted to, this might be a future agenda item, but maybe you could just clarify what we're doing for cleaning services for the buildings?
I can't clarify, we had talked about going out for RFPs. The person who has been filling in at the library, working as a contractor, did come forward and ask, you know, said, I'm interested in just expanding, in sitting, talking with Joan and with her. Instead of going out for RFP, it seemed easier to say yes, so she is working with us on a trial basis right now as a contractor, same rate she was paid with the library, giving us the flexibility. We don't need daily cleaning, and, you know, we can specify, yep, she'll check the bathrooms every day, but a soil cleaning, you know, three times a week, if we have events, to be able to say yes. So, that's where we were struggling with an RFP for a private company to come in, because it's a changing, it's not a day-to-day. We need this every day. The library is a little more clear-cut, yep, we're open six days a week, we need it cleaned every day, the bathrooms every day. So, we are working with her, we'll be getting, she's getting insurance for us, documentation, we'll be getting a contract drafted, but in the meantime, she has been helping us out instead of our guys doing the cleaning.
Alright.
So, that's in the works, getting the final language for that.
What is her rate?
$25 an hour.
Alright.
Anything else, Chris?
No, thank you.
Okay, I've got something else, and I'm, you don't need more on your plate, Lisa. And I just started it, so we'll see if anything happens. You know we have the water tower, and the water tower has been there, I'm talking the big one, the old one. I read an article in the Daily Jefferson County Union, and Fort Atkinson just went through a major rehabilitation of that water tower. And they did it, and then they transferred it over to the Hoard Museum, and.
They transferred it to them, Mark?
Hoard, the Hoard Dairy Museum, the publication, and they're, they're now taking care of it. And so, I, I put an email in to the Fort Atkinson Historic Structures Committee Chairperson. By the way, they're looking for people, too. But anyway, just to find out what their process was, how did they go about scoping this, how did they get a budget on it, how did they come up with, you know, the timetable and, you know, just, just to see, to get you information. And I don't have anything to report, but I, I did do that.
This comes, this is really, the water tower is, is part of water, okay? Now, let me finish.
No, I'm, I will. I thought it was, but it's, it's not, it's not functional there, and I thought it was historical structures.
No, it's not a historical structure at this point.
No, it's not, and we do have the historic committee that we were in the process of setting up, and then COVID hit, it hasn't, not, but.
That, that committee was even before COVID, and it went nowhere.
Yeah.
If, if you're, if it's going to be historic, it's got to be, it's got to be returned the way it was built, exactly, according to plans.
Okay.
Okay, and I don't know where the money's going to come from, because that's the biggie.
Yeah.
It probably, I would say 75 to 100,000.
Yeah.
To update it, and we have, we, we had Town and Country do a, a bid package for us to take it down, and it just never went anywhere.
Yeah.
But I, I'm really thinking with everything else that's going on, I'd like to put that part of the bid package for, for well number three. We had two water towers in Cambridge, when they put well number three in, or well number two, that, that water tower came down. There was another water tower in Cambridge.
Yeah, yeah, but I.
And this is in poor repair, if you go over and take a look at it.
I've seen the inside and, you know, the door, and the walls, though, and that thing are like this thick, you know? It goes up and.
And it's not on the agenda today, but if we get information, it's something we can talk about and have to look at.
You've got a funding source, that's great.
Well, and that's all part of it, so I'm just letting you know what I did. I got a phone call, or actually email, I haven't heard back, I checked.
And one other quick thing, if it's, if you're going to have the top painted, it's going to cost as much as, as the water tower out there, probably costs $200,000 to have the top painted.
Okay, I don't know anything, I'm just starting it, so we'll, we'll go with that. Okay, anything else for the good of the cause? Otherwise, anybody want to make a motion for adjourn?
Also move.